It's red, there you go. Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission of the city of Socorro, Texas. This is September 2nd, 2025, 5:33 PM. We call this meeting to order.
Good afternoon. Item number two, Establishment of Quorum. Andrew Arroyos.
Here.
Enrique Cisneros.
Here.
David Estrada.
Here.
Osvaldo Reza.
Here.
We have a quorum with four commissioners present. Item number three. I'm sorry. Julie Dominguez, absent. Yolanda Rodriguez, absent. Item number three, open forum. Esteban, do we have anyone that would like to speak?
Hello, can you all hear me?
Ma'am, can you hear us? We can, oh, hold on, hold on. Oh, she's on mute, hold on. How about now, ma'am? Sorry about that. Can you hear us now?
Okay, now I can hear you all. Thank you.
Thank you. We have nobody that would like to speak in a open forum. Item number four, Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion made by Andrew Arroyos, second by David Estrada to approve. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried. Regular agenda. Item number five, Public Hearing, Public Hearing for the Proposed Amendment to the City of Socorro's Master Plan and rezoning of Lot 28, North Loop Acres Subdivision, located at 624 Hesse Drive, Socorro, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Medium Density Residential, to allow for a duplex. Mr. Arroyos?
Good afternoon, everybody. We will open public hearing at 5:35. We don't have any speakers. We will close public hearing at 5:35.
Thank you. Item number six, Considering Take Action on the Approval of the Proposed Amendment to the City of Socorro's Master Plan and rezoning of Lot 28, North Loop Acres Subdivision, located at 624 Hesse Drive, Socorro, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Medium Density Residential, to allow for a duplex. Ms. Kimito?
Uh, thank you, Mirian. Thank you, Planning and Zoning Commission. Lorene Kimito, City Planner for the City of Socorro. Item number six for your consideration is a rezoning request for 624 Hesse Drive. The property is located at, uh, 624 Hesse Drive. It is Lot 28, North Loop Acres Subdivision. The property owner is Black Diamond Developments LLC. The representative is Lorena Armenda. The property is, uh, thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty square feet, currently zoned, single-family residential, and vacant. The future land use map for the area recommends suburban residential. In summary, the request is for approval of a rezoning of a property from R1 to R2 to allow for a duplex. Planning and zoning staff recommends of approval of the rezoning request. A little more detailed information on the request. The property is located at the intersection of Hesse and Steadham Drive, just northeast of, uh, North Loop. The property is zoned R1 Single Family Residential, as is the adjacent property, except for the property that is across the street from it on Steadham Drive. That is a special use district. A zoomed-out view of the area shows, uh, the mix of commercial on North Loop and that the area is largely residential, R1 and R2, a single R2 lot on Hesse Drive. The red outline in the, in the next zoning map shows the boundary for North Loop Acres. North Loop Acres was recorded in nineteen fifty-six. It currently has thirty-eight R1 residential lots, one R2 residential lots, and no R3 residential lots. There are also a mix of commercial lots within the subdivision. There are two C1s, three C2s, and two SU Special Use District, uh, lots, and, uh, ponding on North Loop. There are also four lots that are undeveloped. The future land use map, uh, from the Socorro 2040 Comprehensive Plan depicts this area as residential, suburban residential. The aerial photograph, uh, gives you a better view of the current conditions. This is, again, a vacant lot. The lots to the south and north are also vacant, and then the mix of various housing types, uh, surrounding the property. The SU across from the property on Steadham is a church. Photographs were taken of the property from Steadham Circle. Uh, that photograph is on top, and the photograph on the bottom is from Hesse Drive. Public notices were sent to property owners within two hundred feet. No notifications were received either in support or against the request. And these are, uh, the letters that were sent out notifying the prop- adjacent property owners of the request. The next slide shows the site plan depicting the two units, uh, side by side, parking on Hesse Drive. In summary, the request is for approval of a rezoning of a property from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Medium Density Residential, and staff can answer any questions, and the applicant is, uh, available to answer any questions as well.
I don't have any questions. I'd like to make a motion to approve. I'll second, uh, with staff recommendation that, uh, going from an R1 to an R2, but only allowing a duplex.
I have a motion made by, I am so sorry, by Enrique Cisneros, second by Andrew Arroyos to approve with the recommendation of staff from R1 to R2 for a duplex. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, to allow only a duplex.
To allow only a duplex.
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor of a motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried. Item number seven, Public Hearing for the Proposed Amendment to the Code of Ordinance of the City of Socorro, Texas, Chapter Forty-Six, zoning Article Four, District Regulations, to add the District Regulations from the A1 Agricultural Zoning District. Ms. Kimito?
Chairman Arroyos, I would like to ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to delete this item. There have been significant changes that have resulted from our meetings with the Steering Committee, which are going to require that we reintroduce the item, republish, so we will be sending out those notifications to A1 Property, A1 Agricultural District Property Owners as well. We are proposing to present the introduction for this item September the sixteenth and a public hearing October seventh.
Make a motion to propose, uh, propose, to delete the item from the agenda.
And we would be considering to delete items seven and eight. Do I have, I have a motion made by Andrew Arroyos, a second, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried to delete items seven and eight. Thank you. Item number nine, Public Hearing for the Proposed Amendment to the City of Socorro's Master Plan and rezoning of Track Four-B, Block Sixteen, Socorro Grant, located at 232 South Nevades Road, Socorro, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential to A1 Agricultural and a conditional use permit to allow for a small-scale water dis- designation project. Ms. Kimito?
Thank you, Mirian. Uh, as well with items, uh, nine and ten, because they are dependent on the results of items, uh, seven and eight, we are requesting that we postpone that item to the public hearing for October seventh.
Before we do that, real quick, um, I know that, uh, the farm in question is, has a grant for that, the farm in question has a grant for this project?
Yes.
And the grant is where, and they're?
Yes, they're being, uh, kept up to date on all of the, um, the whole process that they're, uh, trying to undertake in the city and meeting with, uh, that they're meeting with the city of Socorro.
And the reason is, it's a great grant opportunity, it's a, it's a great project in hand, and if we could do it today, we would, but we need the designation first. But, um, that would, that's the only apprehension they have. I'll make a motion to delete items nine and ten.
Postpone, please.
Or postpone, set nine and ten till October seventh.
Yes, thank you.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion made by Andrew Arroyos, second by Osvaldo Reza to approve, um, to postpone item nine and ten. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried. Item number eleven, Considering Take Action on the approv- on the Approval of the Preliminary Plat for Bowman Commercial Center, being Track Nine, Ten-A, and Eleven-A, Block Two, Socorro Grant, and located on North Loop Drive and Bowman Road, City, City of Socorro, El Paso County, Texas. Ms. Kimito?
Uh, thank you, Mirian. Thank you, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission members. Item number eleven is a preliminary plat request for Bowman Commercial Center preliminary plat, Track Nine, Ten-A, and Eleven-A, Block Two of Socorro Grant. Clint Land Holdings Company LLC is the property owner. Their representative, Enrique Escobar. The lot is, uh, twenty-four acres in size, and the zoning is C2 General Commercial. Currently, this property is vacant, and the future land use map for the area designates the area as regional commercial. In summary, the request is for approval of a preliminary plat for Bowman Commercial Center. Planning and zoning staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat for Bowman Commercial Center. The variance for the reduction in the required right-of-way will be submitted with the final plat. This property is located at North Loop and Bowman. It was recently rezoned to C2. The, uh, green zoning is agricultural, the yellow is R1 Single Family Residential, the pink is C1, and the blue is the CSU Special Use District. These are photographs taken of the property. The top photograph was taken from North Loop, and the bottom proper, the bottom photograph was taken from Bowman to the rear of the property, looking toward, um, toward the interstate, toward the Mesa Drain. The aerial photograph, again, shows the vacant property highlighted in, uh, outlined in yellow. Some of the vacant lots adjacent to it, as well as the residential, mostly to the north and, um, and west. The special use district property is the, uh, school and fire station. Next slide shows the preliminary plat, depicting the commercial lots, which would be fronting the extension of Bowman. These are, six lots and a po- a public pond. Sorry, seven lots. And with that, staff can, oh, in summary, the request is for approval of a preliminary plat for the Bowman Commercial Center. And with that, staff can answer any questions. And Mr. Jorge Escarate of CEA Group is also in attendance to answer any questions you may have.
You mentioned a variance. I don't see a variance being requested here.
No, uh, staff, and I will, I will, uh, take the blame for that mist, uh, making the request for the variance. The width of right-of-way that's being requested on the plat is seventy-six, uh, feet of right-of-way. And at the bottom left of the plat, you can see the section detail. It might be a little bit difficult to read, but it does include a five-foot sidewalk, five-foot parkway, a fourteen-foot median, and then the two lanes, two directions of traffic, uh, twenty-one feet of, of pavement for the, uh, two lanes of traffic, traffic in both directions. So the reduction is in the, in the parkway.
So it would go from seven, it would go from seventy-six feet to what?
No, no, it, that is what it is being proposed, seventy-six.
And what would, and down, going down, the request is to go down to seventy-six from what?
From ninety.
So fourteen feet, on a four-lane and, and a, and a middle, on a five-lane road. This is the same one that's gonna future, in the future, connect all the way to I-ten, correct?
Yes. The introduction was on your agenda today. At your next meeting, you will, uh, see the rezoning of the property that's beyond the drain at the end of this subdivision, and that, exactly, uh, the vacant land, currently agricultural, no longer being farmed, and that would have two future connections to the interstate.
I don't have any more questions.
I have a couple of questions. Um, for, as far as the main, like, the main sewer line, where is that? What will you be connecting to the main sewer line, or where is the main sewer line at?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jorge Escarate with CEA Group for the record. Uh, to answer your question, Commissioner, um, the sanitary sewer, there's actually a couple, uh, access points or connection points. It's right there on, was it Reese Court? There's it right there. There's a sewer line that is there. And then on, uh, Bowman, at the end, all the way there, there's another connection point there.
And then Bowman, and then on?
Reese Court, yes, correct. And we've coordinated with the Lower Valley Water District on this.
Okay. Um, and then to follow up on, on the, on the width, why the, why the variance? Where, where's the other seven foot going on each? Or the lack, there's fourteen feet, right?
Right. So primarily, most of it is related to the, to the, uh, parkway, which is an area that is typically maintained by the city of Socorro, or the municipalities typically maintain most of those parkways. We did check the pavement width. The pavement width, uh, that we're proposing is, uh, six feet shorter than what is shown on the ninety-foot right-of-way, typical right-of-way section. Um, again, the ninety, the, the right-of-way section that is being, that is shown on the city's, typical city's ordinance, is wider streets. Uh, I think as most of these cities are moving to, I'm gonna call them road diets, is trying to get streets that are a little bit more narrow and not as wide, 'cause, uh, once you have that really wide appearance, traffic tends to speed. I mean, that's the tendency in this, studies that have been done, I think, through the Institute of Transportation Engineers and all that. So if you go back to a lot of municipalities, they've done these road diets, which they try to shrink the streets a little bit so that it doesn't give it that long appearance. So the majority, about eight feet, uh, is we're taking away from the parkway. So it's four feet on each side. This, the right-of-way is a little bit, uh, the pavement width is six feet, uh, narrower than what is shown on the subdivision ordinance. Uh, we still have adequate travel lengths, which are the adequate for the ten, the learned footers with the fourteen-foot striping me, uh, lane in the middle for turning vehicles to be able to move. Uh, so anything that you end up getting wider as people to want to cross the street, a pedestrian, it's just that more longer that they're gonna have to take that time, which poses sometimes a risk for pedestrians, which is why some streets, some municipalities start going with road diets. I mean, bottom line, that's, you know, some of the stuff that we've been incorporating, uh, into our, into the developments, so.
Road diets.
Road diets means the, you know, like, like, after Christmas, you know, all, we all, we say we, we wanna get into a diet. They tried to shrink that street a little bit, so, but it still functions.
So there's gonna be two lanes one direction, two lanes the other way, and then what, turning lane?
Yes, sir.
And it still functions?
Yes, sir.
And then it helps you gain a little bit, I guess, more square footage?
It does, you know, right.
Okay, but that's, okay. Um, are you contributing, or is there any, like, the, on the frontage along North Loop, for any North Loop extension?
Yes, sir. We are dedicating right-of-way, which is that portion right there that has been, you see the two dark lines, uh, in between, where the arrows going up and down? We're dedicating additional right-of-way to the city of Socorro, for the future extension of North Loop. So, again, this kinda helps out in some of the other developments that we've been doing, like the Hermanos Farms, uh, and, uh, I think even in, uh, some of the other subdivision, Leonorda Estates, that right-of-way has been dedicated to the city, and it's, hopefully gets that, the, the fruition of that widening of North Loop a lot closer with now the city being able to contribute their proportionate share to the project, which is most likely right-of-way acquisition, but if they already own the right-of-way, they don't have to spend dollars, they already earn it by, or got it by plating, uh,
By plating it?
By subdivision plating, correct.
How, how wide is it, like, the, the, the right?
Uh, I believe it's thirty feet that we dedicate it, and then, 'cause I think it's a sixty-foot right-of-way and then a thirty-foot whenever the other side.
Okay, um. Do you, do you anticipate, I think I asked, it's already on the, when it got rezoned, but do you anticipate any frontage off of North Loop?
No, sir. All the frontage is pretty much gonna be through off of Bowman, and the reason is that, as, this is a, North Loop is a Tech Start facility. They like to control access points, uh, to avoid, you know, the stop and go and then potential, you know, not paying attention, they cause accidents. So they rather have most of the, you know, the in-and-out traffic going through, off, off, I guess, off their system roadways, which would be like, in this case, Bowman.
Okay.
And there's a, there's a traffic signal, correct. I, that's right. Uh, there's a traffic signal already programmed at that intersection with Tech Start and cooperation with the city of Socorro.
Is there, do you, do you know of a, of a start date for the traffic signal itself, like, when they'd be breaking ground?
I, I got plans from, but it was the way Tech Start, and this was Tech Start-driven, not city of Socorro-driven. City of Socorro, I think, participated, probably financially through grants and all that, but Tech Start designed it. I got a copy of the plans. It is, I, if I'm not mistaken, it's like a hundred and twenty pages, 'cause it's not just this signal. I guess to try to get a better, you know, a better value, they group a lot of traffic signals, and I'm not sure, I think there's probably like thirty, forty traffic signals that get grouped together, and I guess to get a better value, so that the contractor just goes around. I don't know, uh, and Tech Start won't probably share that with me, just because we're not really the, the, the end-users. It's really the city of Socorro that would be the end-user. They may be able to have better information on that.
We don't have an update yet, but I, I did send, ask for an, an update this morning.
Okay. Then, one last question, and, uh, do you anticipate any, you coming back and asking for warehouses on any of these parcels? Do you anticipate foresee that?
No, sir. This is relatively, I mean, from my experience of working in warehousing, this is relatively small for a warehouse. I mean, they require several million or thousands, hundred thousands of square feet, and this will not justify, it just won't make sense at all. So, uh, there's already interest, I can tell you that, and I just got the word this morning from the client, on, uh, about two or three of them already have some interest in, in buying the land, or buying the lots once we get it platted, and there's some interest to put some commercial activity in this area. And you'll probably see more commercial activity, as Ms. Kimito mentioned, that I think at the next P&amp;Z, there's gonna be the, the master plan rezoning that's being proposed, and I think once you see that and you see the, the rooftops coming in, people start getting excited, because I can tell you from working with commercial builders and developers, they count the rooftops, you know, and the trips. And if they don't meet a certain threshold, they won't even look at a site, but when they start looking at how many rooftops are coming, it starts igniting potential for gas stations, a coffee shop, you know, stuff like that.
I see. Okay, interesting. All right, I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Escarate, would, would the, losing the variance of the fourteen feet impede you guys from moving forward with the project? from moving forward with the project?
It would impede us, just because it would cause, as a matter of fact, we already have the entire subdivision fully designed. We already have, I think, some understandings with, between the developer and certain, you know, and discussion with city manager, or City of Socorro upper management. We've had meetings with the county on extension of Bowman at one point, and it was agreed on what that right-of-way was gonna be, and that's why we're asking for the variance. So it was something that was agreed upon in discussions for the last several months and discussed, and that's how we decided to move forward.
Do you think if the variance wasn't approved, that we could still get that 30-foot right-of-way on North Loop?
Probably not, because then he would have to make up the square footage for some of the land that, that got, or the square footage that he lost, which eventually the state would have to come back and buy the land and pay for it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I do have a question for Ms. Camino.
Yes, oh.
Ms. Camino, if, because the variance wasn't on here, do we have to?
That's why I'm proposing to present it with the final plat. So it's not up for approval today, because it wasn't included in the introduction language. But just for your awareness, it will come with the final plat.
Which will be the next meeting?
Should be, or after the, after the, October. The final plat.
Would you, okay, thank you. Would you foresee you guys start building on there?
Construction? I would say, we already have plans that are being submitted to the City of Socorro, so I would say probably within the, you'll probably start seeing some activity within the next week or two.
You already, you already cleared some land?
They've cleared some land, some material, right, but to start cutting the streets and all that, will probably be in a couple of weeks. Utility work, that, that, just the utility work for, even though it's commercial, primarily it's commercial, it's just one street, a pond, you're probably still taking about eight months to do all that work. It's just a very slow process. You gotta get grading, cut the streets, put in the utilities, get with the Lower Valley, put in the storm sewer, coordinate with El Paso Electric. El Paso Electric's taking a lot longer to do things. And then you gotta get in the Texas Gas Service, even though they're short runs. But this being a main road, I can see that the gas company is gonna probably put a six-inch gas line, or something a little bit larger that would be able to service a larger service area, and then do a connection probably up at I-10 to be able to loop the entire system, provide better pressures of gas for the entire, not just for our development, but also for the existing residents that are flooding us.
Thank you.
Fi-final, final completed connection from I-10 to North Loop?
That's, so there's a, I mean, I can talk into it and go into, so the, if you, and I know you don't have this project, or you don't have the, the map in front of you, the, we call it the Bowman Master Plan. It's divided into three. If you look at it, you have this portion from the Mesa Spring to North Loop, it's kinda, it's isolated area. And then you got the Mesa Spur Drain, I think the Mesa Drain, okay? And that's another isolated area. And I think that's gonna go a lot further, a lot faster. The, the portion between I-10 and the Mesa Drain is a little bit slower, because the county of El Paso has a project that they're trying to get, I think, environmental clearance, I think it was gonna be in August, September, some, somewhere in that range, to do a huge pond to alleviate some of the flooding that's been ongoing in this area right here. They're retaining 100% of the runoff. That portion between I-10 and the Mesa Spur, or the Mesa Drain is in the flood zone. We gotta submit a CLOMAR in order to alleviate it from the flood zone. We can't submit a CLOMAR until the county gets their approval and their clearance for the big pond that they're gonna put, so that we know what the outflows are gonna be between the pond and our development, so that we can account for the ponding, the retention, because we're retaining all the runoff. So I know the county is looking at going to construction next year. That's the schedule that they gave us. And that was about, I think in February is what we were told. I know Dan and Baum's the one that are doing the work, and I think it's being run by Munzer at the county of El Paso. So we're kinda awaiting their lead of how fast they're gonna go, so that we can go ahead and proceed with our CLOMAR. Because a CLOMAR takes about six months for us to complete and about a year for FEMA to approve. So, I mean, to give you, I mean, I know it's not an answer that you want, but it's, I'm gonna say probably three, four years.
Three, four years before it's completed, connected.
Completed, yes, sir.
Then one last question, just, just so that I have a frame, I guess. Nuevo Weico Tanks Road, what's the width, what's the right-of-way on that one? Just to, the one coming down from, from I-10 to North Loop, the east lane?
I think that's 110.
That's 110.
But that's three lanes in each direction.
There's three lanes in each.
With a turning lane.
Okay, just give me a minute.
Or a median, I'm sorry, a median, I'm sorry, a median.
No, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. So I'm so sorry. There's no public, it's not open for public speaking, this part of it, right?
Correct, oh.
No, we don't have public speaking.
It's a plat, correct.
All right, no questions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion made by Anne Rojolos, second by Enrique Sisneros to approve. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 12, Planning and Zoning Commissioners' report.
I, I do have one thing. So my, my daughter's playing volleyball for the Socorro Bulldogs. She's a freshman there. So just to let everybody know, if, if you have any candidates that are think, that you think might serve well on this board, let me know. I don't know how much longer I'll be able to serve, just because it conflicts with, with the volleyball. And I have to pick between my little girl and you guys. And as much as I enjoy and love this work, my baby girl wins. But we're, we're making, you know, we're making schedule changes so that, that I can go to half of them and then come to, to the other meetings. But if you have anybody in mind, I'd love to meet them. And ultimately, it's not up to me, because it's up to city council, but we, my wife and I haven't decided on a date yet, but just wanted to let everybody know kind of where we're at. Yeah.
Anybody else?
I wanna say that, that staff and Ms. Camino did a, a great job, I guess, navigating the, the item that went up for committee. I think that was, that's nerve-wracking for you, trying to put everything together. It really is. But overall, we had some good discussions, so I look forward to it coming up in the next meetings.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Item number 13, Planning and Zoning Department Report. Ms. Camino?
In preparation for the meeting, I didn't get, sorry, thank you. In preparation for the meeting, apologize, I didn't get to round up enough information for a proper depart, director's report. I just want to say that I did appreciate the, working with the committee on the A1 zoning change. It was a really worthwhile effort, and we can do that more often and get more people engaged in the rewrite as we go through this whole rewrite of the ordinance. That would be wonderful. So we'll see about how we can incorporate a little more input from the Planning and Zoning Commission on those items. The, I don't know if you all are aware, but city council voted to approve a, a representative from the city staff to participate, not in a voting capacity, but to participate and listen and offer feedback to the county's transportation group. So the transit, while the city staff, city council voted to not take part in the committee, they do have a new director and has been very open to listening to what the city's concerns are regarding the county's transit, what our needs are and what we've identified as our needs. So I think everybody is a little more open to taking steps forward to collaborate and assist each other where we can. So this is a great opportunity for the city and the county to move forward a little, with a little more open, open-mindedness and see where that might go. But for, as of right now, staff has only been hearing good things about the transit, the city's transit and participation. Tomorrow is a transportation, T-PAC, TAC meeting of the, I'm confusing different committees, but the El Paso MPO is having their advisory committee meeting tomorrow. I am a member. We'll get more information about the next round of projects that are going to be proposed for the long-range transportation plan for the, for the El Paso Southern Mexico area. And hopefully, I'll provide more detailed feedback on that at our next planning and zoning meeting. And just as a fun item, the city is hosting their last Socorro Sundays, the first Sunday in September. So we encourage everyone to attend. And if either Judith or Marion know when Harvest Fest is, that also sounds like a great opportunity for the public to come out.
Yes, that would be September 20 from 5 to 10 p.m.
Thank you. And with that, I conclude my department report. And thank you, Mr. Sisneros. It's gonna be very sad to see, sad to see you go. Whenever that day comes, maybe you'll change your mind.
Hopefully, you change your mind.
Yeah, or if you want to nominate anyone as well, it, there are, I believe, we also have another vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission already.
Wow.
And at least three on the Board of Adjustments.
Who's, who's the other vacancy?
Ms. Rodriguez, not Ms. Rodriguez. It was one, two, three?
Julie Dominguez?
No, 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 sorry.
Is it Yolanda Rodriguez?
No, no, no. It's mayor. Representative one, two, and three, four.
There's seven, seven seats.
I want to say that mayor has two, two designees. Yeah. So I feel like we've been managing really well with one vacancy. For Mr. Reyes. At large, as a vacancy. Thank you.
Is Mr. Voltejo still with us?
Yes, yes. I'm sorry. Didn't mean to scare anybody. No, he had a prior engagement and couldn't attend, and Yavita was on vacation, so we were very short staff to date, but I think staff did an excellent job. Thank you, Esteban, as well.
Thank you. Item number 14, considering take action on the adjournment of this meeting. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those, I have a motion made by Anne Rojolos, second by Osvaldo Reza to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstain? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned at 6:12 p.m. Thank you very much.